See what you mean. Okay.
If you're able to hear us, we apologize for working on a sound issue and we'll be getting started shortly.
Troy Dunning testing my mic in hearing room. You can hear me. Please do a thumbs up. Excellent. I believe we are able to start now. So we are live and recording. Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Dunning. Good afternoon and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting for Tuesday, October 27th, 2020. This meeting is held in person and online. For all of those you in the room and online, if you would, please stand and join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. We do have a quorum. All three commissioners in attendance. Mr. Pratt, do we have certification of our agenda today?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Chris Pratt with the County Attorney's Office. Our office has reviewed all of the items on the agenda today, with the exception of item K and item W, which staff have asked to be pulled from the agenda today. Item K, vendor offered a last-minute better deal, and so they want to memorialize that before it comes before you. And item W, the default, has been cured, so it's no longer needed to come before you. Other than those two items, all of these have been reviewed by our office and jurisdiction has been found and notice has been given.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt. And do any commissioners have any items for disclosure for today's hearing?
I have none, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
I have none, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
And I have none. Thank you. In our first order of business, we'd like to recognize a few employees. We really appreciate the opportunity to do this. We really value their service. So if you, this time, if you would bear with us, I would like to call Jeremy Agnes and Eric Morrison up to the lectern. And feel free to remove your mask if it's easier for you to talk. We're okay.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm here to recognize Eric Morrison for his 10 years of service with the county. Eric having you on the team makes a huge difference. Your work ethic speaks for itself every day. He always finds a way to get it done, and when getting it done is always beyond what we expected. Bill Angen, supervisor for Public Works, commented, "Young man, 10 years. Love that guy." He's very meticulous in his job. His repairs are always done right. He always goes above and beyond. Eric is a great example for the county. Fantastic work. Public Works, Parks Department, fleet staff, facility staff, all echo the same compliments. Your work ethic, they enjoy working with you. You're really good at cheering people up. Great worker and asset to the county. Very meticulous in your work. You always help anyone, no matter what it is, and you've never said no. We can always count on Eric when we have any problems. I am consistently impressed by the results you produce and your interactions with county employees and the general public. You helped me open up the Parker shop from the ground up, and when asked for volunteers to move from our castle location to our new shop, you didn't hesitate to make the move. We both set up the shop in Parker and opened it, and it was just the two of us for a minute, but we survived until they hired on some more mechanics. Thank you for being flexible and pushing through, showing up every day with a great attitude. I'll never forget that. Parker Fleet Shop is now a great success because you helped lay the groundwork for what it is now. You're one of the most reliable employees I've ever had. Thank you for setting an example for your coworkers. I'm lucky to have a great employee like you. You are an invaluable member of the team and play a crucial role in fleece's daily success. Thank you for always wanting to learn more and take on additional duties and challenges. Congratulations on 10 years of service. Hope many more years of service. Unless you go skydiving, that's one thing you didn't do well. Remember, you don't land well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. And Eric, we always like to hear a few words from you, and I will ask, you know, whatever you like to say, but, you know, just keep a little lively. You know, you, with your job, I'm sure you see some interesting things, you know. Maybe you can share a story. You can keep the names confidential to protect the guilty if you choose, but maybe just share a story, but also we'd just like to hear a few words from you.
Talk about putting me on the spot. Just being lively and just having fun with everyone makes my job a lot easier. Off the top of my head, just the employee wasn't me, but just having trouble with torches and trash cans, let's just put it that way. It's always nice to have garden hoses close by. Let's just put it that way. Pretty much all the excitement we've had, but no, it's been a great 10 years and let's go for 10 more. That's all I have.
Commissioner comments.
Well, I like that attitude, but don't go too far, Eric, because I want to hear about skydiving.
Well, this one takes a while. I married into a very adventurous family, and there's always rock climbing, rafting, just you name it. And I'm from the Midwest where we don't have a lot of those things, but it's always fun to do whatever life-threatening things are about to happen. So this one particular time, it was just over a year ago, my in-laws decided they wanted to go skydiving. "Well, great. Have a good time," I said. While my sister-in-law gets cold feet and says, "Well, Eric always hangs in there if we don't want to do something, so he can take my place." Well, okay, I suppose I could do that. But my father-in-law talked her back into skydiving again, so I was off the hook, and I was elbowing my other brother-in-laws. Man, that was a close one, because that was not on my bucket list. And my father-in-law heard me say that and walks to his car, comes back and hands me a card. It was my birthday two weeks prior, and I opened it up and it was a birthday card, and they hand-drawn, with a hand-drawn guy with a parachute. So I was going no matter what at this point. So, long story short, we, and it was solo. It was a solo skydive, so first time solo, which I guess is frowned upon these days. So we get up there, and I'm last to jump, but the jump master and the pilot started disagreeing where we were in the air. So they're having a conversation, we'll just call it heated. And I, I'm just curled up into a ball waiting to fall out of the sky. And pretty soon, they just, the jump master looks out the windows, "Oh, are you ready? Get me out of this thing, yeah. I trust you guys." And he sends me out, and it was way too soon. The plane was way too soon, and I was never going to make my landing zone. And so I realized this about halfway down. I'm in big trouble. I'm not anywhere near the airport or the landing zone. I'm falling into this pastureland, which is full of rocks and gullies and brush and whatever you want to describe it as, but the funny part is the owner of the school, the owner of the company is also the guy that's in the monoculars telling you when to flare. Pull your cables down, and that's when you see the people land like a bird on a tree, right? So, but this is so far away that he's, how can you judge someone that far away? I'm literally at least a quarter mile away at this point. So, long story short, he misjudges where I'm going to land, and he says over the two-way, "Flare, flare, flare," which is mean pull the cables and you'll land nice and soft. But I was landing in a gully, which he couldn't see. So I flare, pull the cables, and you're supposed to hold them there until you land, but that means all the air is going out of the parachute. And that's what they don't tell you is you have three to five seconds to land before you freefall once again. And our shop doors are 20 feet high, and I've been telling people between 20 and 30 feet, closer to 30 feet, I think, is how far I freefell back to Mother Earth. Bounced off the sand and into a cactus patch, of all things. When I landed, it was so much force, it broke my foot. It exploded my, pretty much, every bone in the mid-foot. And trying to explain that to Jeremy the next day was, you what? So, but the team, the fleet, fleet maintenance, let me come back on crutches and just perform lots of parts duty work. And I gained a lot of skills in front of a computer, learning more skills that way, so it all, it all worked out. That's my skydiving story. And I'm better, I'm better. I can run, jump, skip, everything but jump out of a plane. No more of that, so.
Well, Eric, thank you for sharing that story with us. Jeremy, you did a great job telling us what kind of an employee, and a great guy Eric is, so thank you for that. I'll just add that during my many years at the State Patrol, I supervised lots of people. And as a supervisor, I would have loved to have had an employee who got all of the great comments that Jeremy told us about you. And even just now, when you were telling us about your story, you figured out how to turn lemons into lemonade by telling us that you learned great computer skills while you were healing up your foot. So that tells us not only what kind of an employee you are, but what kind of a person you are in general. So I'm proud to have someone like you working with Douglas County. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Eric, it's an incredible honor to be on a team with you. You know, life is full of rough landings, but it takes an optimist to see landing in a cactus patch is a good thing. So in my mind, that is just, really exemplifies the Douglas County attitude. So Jeremy, thank you for sharing that, and Eric, congratulations on 10 years.
Thank you. Eric, I think our fleet and the meeting does an amazing job. You work on such a variety of different vehicles and pieces of equipment, apparatuses. You have to know what you're doing. I'm sure it's every day is a new day in some respects. But it's really appreciated. I always admire the condition and shape of our vehicles, even though they're not all brand new. You guys really take care of everything we have. So we really appreciate your great service. And I might have to come back for your next 10 years to hear about maybe a scuba diving story, so good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we ask if he has any coworkers here supporting him?
Yes, and we have a few here. Maybe Stan gives us a way, we know. Great. Thanks for being here, guys. Really appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. And next, I'd like to ask Becky Fisher to come forward and recognize Becky Dockery. Toby, actually going to do the recognition. Thank you, Toby.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Toby Donaldson, Assessor's Office. Here with Rebecca Dockery.
We love.
Also here is Becky Fisher, her direct supervisor, and her former supervisor, Terrell Tillman, our commercial appraisal managers, and Beck. I have the pleasure of speaking on behalf of Assessor Frizzell and our entire Assessor's Office today as we appreciate 15 years of service by Rebecca Dockery, service to the Douglas County citizens, currently as our Assistant Residential Appraisal Manager. I'd like to share a few words of gratitude with you about her excellent public service, her organizational skills, the intelligence that she has shared with us, as well as her work ethic. Becky began work at Douglas County, actually in the motor vehicle department. Do I have that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And she was there for about a year before she joined the appraisal division of the Assessor's Office. Over the next 14 years, Becky would be promoted through several different positions in our office before joining our management team last year. Most of those positions were staff appraisal positions, and most of that time was spent in our commercial appraisal team. That's why Mr. Tillman is back there. On that team, she was responsible for some pretty complex appraisal work, such as Sky Ridge Hospital, Cabela's, Charles Schwab, a lot of the properties in the northern tier of Douglas County, many of which are very difficult like that. Becky has received many compliments from homeowners, business owners, and property owners over the years regarding her ability to convey complicated tax regulation and appraisal theory, appraisal methodology, and generally in providing great customer service to our citizens and fellow staff. Innovation is one of the Assessor's key mission objectives in our office, and Becky has been instrumental in that effort over her whole career. For instance, several years ago, we underwent an effort to go paperless in our office, and she led that effort for the commercial team when she was on it. Becky is a graduate of Diesel, and currently she's using those skills in leading our mobile fieldwork project. We are implementing iPads and iPad applications to replace paper, field sheets, reports, and maps in the field. And she's driving that effort for the residential team. It's a really exciting project we're doing right now. Becky's former and current direct supervisors reminded me of her commitment to the citizens, as well as her team, her direct reports, and her peers. Today, she is responsible for training all new residential appraisers for the Assessor's Office, which includes most of the appraisers which come to our office from outside. Becky consistently exhibits strong commitment to successful teamwork with members of each department she has served. She demonstrates a great level of dedication to the citizens of Douglas County, as well as the goals and objectives that you all and Assessor Frizzell has set forth for us. I speak for my entire office in saying, "Thank you, Becky, for all that you have accomplished. I look forward to continuing to work with you as we tackle future challenges." Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Toby. Becky, you're not going to get off any easier, so we always like to hear a few words and, you know, something, some interesting facts.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have anything as interesting as skydiving and cactus patches, but I've lived in Douglas County for 20 years, and so I'm, the last 15 years have been a blessing to be able to be a part of this county and the community in which I live in. I've experienced great opportunity, but most of all, I've had the chance to work with some amazing people over the last 15 years. And we know that that's what makes this county work the way that it does. So I'm really fortunate to have been a part of that, and I just can't wait to see what the next 15 years bring. Thank you.
So Becky, thank you for everything you've done to contribute to this county and the citizens. From all the packets that I read, I think that the Assessor's job is the most complicated. And I try and plow through all the paperwork that is submitted from your office, but it's very technical. It's very complicated. And the fact that you have worked to streamline it based on what Toby has said is a tribute to you. So thank you for being one of those great employees that make Douglas County a great place to live, work, and play. Thank you.
You know, I just want to thank Toby for his leadership and certainly for Assessor Frizzell's wonderful predilection towards innovation. And it sounds like, Becky, you've really carried that forward. I think my favorite thing is seeing that twinkle in your eye. You almost sound like somebody who just was hired, and yet you're saying, "Hey, let's do another 15 years." And again, that just indicates to us how blessed we are to have someone like you on our team. So thank you and congrats.
Becky, through the words of Toby and I think probably from your coworkers, it really sounds like you're a leader in the Assessor's Office. We really thank you, and that's really what does make Douglas County special, is those who follow, no doubt, but it's those who lead who really make the difference. It sounds like you've had a great variety, because assessing is not simple, and I agree, Commissioner Thomas, to the complexities that are involved. It's not an easy job, but it's obvious you enjoy it. So we really thank you because it's part of the public presentation and the public service to Douglas County residents. So we thank you for all your great work and another 15 years, as you say. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Brings us to item number two, is our citizen and organizational comments. If there's anyone in the audience here or anyone online, I would like to address the board regarding any item that is not on our consent agenda. Please feel free to come forward or to raise your hand. See no one in the audience? Ms. Dunning, anyone online?
Thank you, Commissioner. All attendees are staff. No hands raised.
Okay, Dunning, I imagine no staff is going to speak up?
That is affirmative.
They certainly, they always are welcome to, but, thank you. So bring them back to the board for addressing the consent agenda for any item would be polled or discussed and/or motion.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion to approve the requests in all items A through J and L through V of the consent agenda. Item K has been rescheduled to November 10th, 2020, and item W has been pulled and will not be rescheduled.
Second, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion? All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Consent agenda approved. Brings us to County Manager to board. Any further business?
No further business. I would like to point out, for especially those that are on the WebEx call, I think the Commissioners know this, but today I had the first opportunity to view the meeting on our YouTube feed, which is much better camera angles. It's a little tape delayed. But other than that, it's a much better way to view it if you're not speaking. So I just want to make sure everybody understood that, but I don't have anything else.
Great. Thank you. And County Manager report is enclosed. And as for any Commissioner comments?
Mr. Commissioner Partridge, I would just like to highlight a couple of items that were in the County Manager Report. The very first item talks about families who might be struggling and need emergency COVID assistance. And if you find yourself in that situation, there's a lot of people there with you. So please call our Human Services Department, and they're happy to help you. That phone number is 303-688-4825. You can always go to the county's website and find them also, so that you can get the help that you and your family need. And the Commissioners have been working with staff to provide grants, and I just want to let you know that we've got several, actually 10 nonprofit grants have been approved by the Commissioners. That's a total of $234,762. That's from the $2.5 million grant that the Commissioners made available for nonprofits that have had some expenses that are reimbursable through COVID. And so I just want to let you know, if you're listening and you're a nonprofit, go to our website, call our staff, because we'd love to be able to reimburse you for some of the expenses that you've have had because of COVID. So the county is helping you as much as we're able to with the CARES grant dollars. So thank you for listening. Thank you, Commissioner Partridge.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Lee?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Great. And I have nothing. And I have nothing, but I will comment. Commissioner Thomas oftentimes brings up the County Manager report, and it is amazing how many things go on. And County Manager de Board is very active and does a great job reporting to us. But if you ever just kind of wonder, what does county government do? Read the County Manager's report, and that's just a short snippet of it, but it's always very interesting and great information. But what it does is really highlights the wonderful work all the employees do, and we're very thankful for everyone who works so hard. We really appreciate it. And with the challenging times that everyone has had this year, we can really say that you all haven't missed a beat. We thank you very much. We are adjourned.